To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody, for carving out time to be here for this. I think it's important that we get together this one more time, hopefully the last time, and we can get this straightened out. The city of Hays in good faith depends on both of you to the fullest, and we need to resolve something. We want to resolve this. We don't want this to go on any further. We want projects down the road. We want you guys bidding on projects and working with them, and they'll continue to support us, vice versa. So let's, as much as we can, we need to, I think, have some give and take and figure this out. I'm going to start with more to have Jared go ahead and start.
Yeah, yeah, okay. You kind of heard a lot of this the other night. It's just kind of continuation of the discussion. Really where we're sitting at is we have a quantity of patching that was done, and it's 189,000 bucks worth of some. This really isn't about quality of work. They've done a good job. The work they've done in town is good. You're going to get a good finished product. This is about money. So it's all about patching in those areas. It's $189,000. We're questioning, you know, whether it should be paid for or not based on the specification. The specification clearly said it should have been done within a certain time period, and it wasn't. Contractors made a lot of good points that they believe the work needed to be done anyways. In some cases, they're probably not wrong, but it's impossible to say for sure because the work was done outside of the spec. So that's a lot of the stuff that they argued the other night, and I guess, while I definitely dispute a lot of the things that they said, they're not wrong in some cases. So I guess I'm hopeful that I agree, that we can find some common ground here and do what's right, and I guess it looks fair. So I guess if you guys have anything more to add right away, or if we want to, we can go through the specs and we can go through photos. We can do whatever you want to do at this point. I'm prepared to talk about the specs and the patches in specific areas, but, you know, I didn't have anything else prepared at this moment to start off with, I guess.
Well, I listened to the conversation the other evening, and you had commented that this DOT spec is designed maybe not for the application that was, it was used for here within the city. And while I can't dispute that, that is the way that the contract was written up and signed by the parties involved in the project here. So I guess when push comes shove, Pat's not here to support this. That's what's contractually put together. But at the same time, we all recognize that there is value to the work that was done out there. That the patching created a situation for us where those particular streets are going to last longer than they would have otherwise. I can't, I can't say that I'm an expert in saying, you know, these streets, by virtue of them being exposed longer, whether or not prior to that five, exceeding the five days, they needed it or didn't need it. I'm not going to dispute that, but there's no question in my mind that, you know, as time continued to progress, we saw more and more. You talked about, you know, you take a little thing like that, you keep driving over, it's going to get bigger and bigger and bigger and bigger. You know, I don't know from a practicality standpoint how much of that would have been patched if we would have done it four days into the project versus 30 days into the project like some of the areas were. So where am I going with all this blabbering? I like the idea that we come to kind of a midpoint here to where we understand that, yes, we can't go back now and scientifically prove one way or the other because it's after the fact here, but I feel like there's some reasonability there that the longer that was exposed, there was more damage that was happening. And I'm not convinced that maybe as much patching would have happened if we would have done after in an earlier period. I'm guessing, and I agree with what you said, where ultimately when it was done, we got a better product, but had we not started seeing that busting up there in the beginning, we would have gotten those streets covered without the added expense of the patching. Is that a fair assessment?
In most cases, I do not agree with that.
So you would have came to the table and said, you know what, we just completely disagree. We, even though the contract says get this done within five days, we just feel like this isn't sound, and we think that we need to be patching all of these spots in Divide Street.
I guess I would have a presentation I'd like to give you to show you where we stand on it, if you want to take the time to listen to that.
No, that's why we're here today. I want to be more educated, but I guess when all is said and done, from my standpoint, I think there's a common ground we can come to. I don't think that common ground is $189,000, but I think it's more than $11,006.
Go ahead. Jared, if you have something else. Please, Trevor.
Okay. You know, first of all, we fully understand that we are, have a contract with people. So the issues and the things that are going to come up are not between mail construction and more engineering. You have a contract with them. You have contractual obligations with them. They have a job to do. You have a contract with us, and we have a job to do. So the things I'm going to bring up and the issues, it's not between us and more engineering because it's what's going to happen between you and us. And whatever you decide to do between the owner and the engineer is up to you guys. That's entirely up to you guys. So I'm going to address how the situation and contract is between us and you in this situation. I have some handouts for you, and I think I'd like to start with our initial schedule here. And I know Jared had referred to this the other night. But based on our initial schedule, this was presented at the pre-job on May 3rd. We showed that the milling would start on June 4th and be completed on June 27th. That's what we showed for our milling schedule at that time. And we showed the paving to start on June 20th and be done on July 13th. See that on the schedule there? So that was our original plan. That was our original proposal. That's how we looked at trying to do this project. Now, for a number of reasons, whether it be weather delays or whatever, we actually started milling on June 11th. It's actually a week later than what this schedule shows. It was seven days later when we started milling. We started paving on July 2nd, Monday, July 2nd. So that was actually 12 days, 11 days later than what our schedule showed. Okay? Now, we continued to mail straight through, and we continued to pave straight through. So the milling was off by seven days, and the paving was off by 11 days. So we're really only about four days apart there from what our original plan was. So I just want to make it clear that this is how we originally planned it. That's what we looked at doing. We were fairly close on schedule, really. Then each time we had a weekly meeting, I'll see.
Did you guys, did you guys get to talk through this?
This was the pre-job. We kind of laid this out in the discussion that we had. So, and the reason being, we've talked about this a little bit, but in order to get all those streets milled and get them prepped and get them ready to pave, it takes about three times as long to mail and prep a street as it does to pave them. So you got to be kind of ahead of the schedule, especially the way we had planned on paving it with multiple pavers and all being in here at the same time and trying to get covered up as fast as we could. So that was our original schedule that we laid out and talked about. Then we had the weekly meetings where each time we talked about what our schedule, what we're going to do the next week or two. And all along there, I guess we didn't try to say we're not going to follow the spec, but this is the way we're going to do it to get it done vastly efficiently for the betterment of people, for the betterment of the project, everything. So we had no intentions of opening things up, letting them fall apart so we could incur extra costs to do it because patching sucks. So that was never our original intent. Now, at the weekly meetings, we brought up, and at the pre-job, a few occasions, that we were concerned about the two-inch milling depth and the four-inch milling depth. And Ted's got excerpts from those meetings and his notes of bringing that up and talking about it. I don't know if you guys remember that, but it was brought up on several occasions that we were concerned about if taking two inches off those streets full depth was a smart thing to do.
Do you have the specific dates? And I only ask that because I spent my night, last night, watching the weekly meeting videos, and I started back in June, the earliest dates that we had on this site that we got there. And I heard a lot of conversation, and I wasn't hearing that conversation, so.
There were just points that were brought up during the meetings on May 17th. I discussed that thin mix.
Okay. I didn't have a May 17th meeting, so.
That's when we were tearing up the curb.
Our superintendent was saying, you know, as we tore off our curb, he said, this mix is only two inches beside the curb. What's it like through the rest of these streets? We had May 24th, same.
So that was a comment. It wasn't, we should look at doing something different here?
It was a comment that we were concerned because our street thickness is thin.
More of what we would call a warning, because as I mentioned to you before, all the jobs we bid and built, we haven't seen this two-inch mill full depth and four-inch mill cross the whole street and really concerned about whether what's there underneath there can handle it. I mean, we were concerned about that from the very beginning, from the get-go, and we brought it up many times.
And just understand that, you know, as board members that maybe sat in the meeting and stuff, if you made a statement, you know, it's two inches thick here. I'm curious how thick it is elsewhere there. If it's voiced like that, that's where I think the question's being asked, is that really saying, hey, we're really concerned on this, and we think you guys, you know, I don't know. You would think the discussion would then go down the path of, if we're really concerned on this, what have we got to do different with our schedule to be able to come for this? Otherwise, it's all going to crumble away or something.
Well, we didn't feel that it really had as much of an impact on our schedule as should we be looking at a different design. Should we be doing something different with these streets than the way the plans are laid out?
Was that a specific question asked?
That wasn't brought up, well, I think it was on the 31st when I said, you know, these streets are thin. We have thin mix. We're concerned about our subgrade strength, and I think that was when we had the, when Luke said, don't worry, we've done this lots of times. We've done lots of two-inch and four-inch milling builds, and I said, we have not. So that's why we're, we have never done a two-inch or a four-inch milling field in town because we were very concerned about that, having that strength.
So did the discussion then say maybe we should be blocking off some of these streets so that we can minimize traffic on there, or?
Well, that's not really up to us.
No, but clearly you can ask that question.
Is that Moore's decision?
Well, we have a set of plans to follow and to build and design than what you've given us bid off of. And we tried to flag things or say predict things, especially when you start tearing into it and something doesn't look like you thought it would or should, you know? So as far as at that point in time pointing any fingers, there was none of that. We didn't do that. We didn't go back and forth, and they didn't do that, and we didn't do that, but we brought up our concerns and were voicing warnings about that at that point. Okay? So then we got into the milling, and we started, the first couple of days, we did the full depth stuff, but on the 13th, we started the actual two-inch mill on June 13th. And I think Luke alluded to this, and we saw this too, but when we first started on some of those, right away, some of them had were falling apart underneath there. There was some obvious problems in some of those areas when we first started. Now, I've given you a few pictures to look at here. So the first one there is, that's a street that we milled two inches off of. So you can see what that street looks like. And you can see that we're through the pavement and into the base, and there's no structural strength of the pavement left underneath that. So the question becomes is, should that be patched, or should you pave over top of that, or what should you do? But that's what it looked like after it was milled two inches.
And I know as we went into this project, we recognized that we might run into situations like this. This is very evident right from the get-go. And I don't think there was ever any contention that there wouldn't be an alternative plan to simply putting asphalt over it. There would have to be some form of patching, whether it was the digging down or doing the concrete, whatever the solution was, something else had to be done. That's very evident.
So at this point, they're looking at it. We're looking at it. This is what we have. We've done the two-inch milling. What needs to be done?
Yep.
And that's why I said, you know, some of this was evident and obvious right away, but we needed some direction on what are we supposed to do with this? You know, what should happen? First of all, these areas need to be marked out. See what, how big they are, where they're at, that sort of thing. None of them were marked out.
But it seems to me, in our meetings, both special meetings and our normally scheduled commission meetings, all along in this project, we were having the discussions that we found these type of situations. We need you guys as a board to give us direction, or at least understand that there's going to be adders to the project because we have to do this patching and stuff like that. So those, we saw and experienced and knew that that was happening all along.
Right. So we were at the point where here's, we mailed something. Now, what should we do with it? Okay. And it was brought up in the weekly meetings that this, these areas are out there.
Yep.
And Luke even agreed, you know, some of them right away, it's right behind the mill. They're obvious. So there's a series of pictures there. The second one shows an area along the curb where the asphalt's obviously breaking up, crumbling apart next to the curb.
Yep.
You know, why is that? It's thin. You can see by the size, the thickness of it, it's an inch or less.
And this looks like it's up in, or probably S1 or S2 to the curb.
Do you have an extra copy of that?
You have mine.
Yeah, I have one.
This one, that's on photo?
So that's an area where, you know, an example, and I didn't print all the pictures we have, but I have just something to give you a visual. Sometimes that's worth more than pop. So the next picture is an area where the two-inch milling had been done, and when we got done milling it, that spot that you see in the middle there, that basically, there was nothing there, so we cleaned it all up, and that's what we were left with. So then the question becomes, do you just pave over that, or what do you do with that? But you can see that the amount of work that went into doing this wasn't just milling two inches and cleaning it up because you didn't have sound, hard asphalt underneath. The amount of work required to clean that up and fix this and get this ready for paving is very much more extensive than a normal two-inch milling. The next picture is with our skid steer in there, and basically the skid steer is just peeling up the thin areas where there's nothing left there and trying to clean it up and get it ready for paving.
Any idea what road this is on? Is this Divide, or?
Not sure. So these are spattering them all over, all around. The next one is a cul-de-sac, one of the cul-de-sacs down there where we're two-inch milling. And look at, you can even see where all the cracking is right in the middle there, all the chunks that came out of there, all the mess along the valley gutter. You know, that's what we had to contend with there.
That's not far from it. Yeah, that was bad.
For cleanup and fixing. Okay, so the next one is, okay, we were actually in there paving. We started paving these because nothing had been decided, no areas had been marked. And we started paving. Not one single patch area had been marked. Nothing. So we started paving this, and we've got one lift on one side, and look what you have on the other side. You know, that's our construction equipment going in there trying to pave it. And look at how thin that pavement is. Those two pictures are the same, that one and the next one.
But then there comes the question, how long was this left open?
But it's thin pavement there. It's not going to hold up. It doesn't matter how long it's left open. It really doesn't. That's what you've got underneath. So when you put two inches on top of it, that's what you're going to have for a finished product. It didn't erode. The pavement didn't go thinner over time. It didn't go away. Didn't disperse.
But if it would have been paved over right away, there might not have been as much cracking, and then it wouldn't be, even though it's thin.
So what about, I'm going to just throw it out here. Do we dig this down too, or do we, the base was, because we milled down into gravel underneath.
The only patch that we did on this rail was on the other end. Very intersection would be the southwest corner of Fifth and Second. It was a small area in there where the tech business.
When we milled out here, I mean, this is a very good example of what a good base looks like. We drove loaded trucks across there. That didn't flex at all. That base out there was rock solid. You know, without, it was our rock. That was hard. We had other stuff up on the other block that we looked through that still had two inches of mix on it that were flexing underneath the weight of a picket. We're listening. We had loaded trucks with, you know, their 80, 90,000 pounds that they didn't move at all. This had an excellent base on it. We weren't finding that on a lot of other streets.
Yeah, the other streets didn't have a six-inch gravel base. And that sort of thickness for that, that's not going to last or hold up, no matter if it's a day or 10 days or two weeks. It's just too thin. Paper's thin. It's going to crumble. It's going to fall apart. And then you're going to have two inches of pavement on top of it that isn't going to last for very long. So then the last picture there shows, it's just, that's just a visual of, you know, us putting some mix in it and actual patching and what that looks like. You know, it's a patch, you know, but it's a small amount of quantity, large amount of labor, a lot of extra work, slow production stuff when it comes to the patching. There were 75 patches that we did around the house. Total of 75. Some quite large. Those are the ones that we offered at D.DOT on the large ones. The other ones were, you know, quite a bit smaller. So why is it like this? You know, what caused this? Whose fault is this? It's what was there. It's what you have in town. That's what these areas are. It wasn't negligence on our part of waiting. Most of this stuff showed up right away. Now, did they grow a little bit because it's thin and it fell apart? Yeah, probably from driving traffic on, but it was already thin and already going to fall apart. So it's indicative of what we found all over town. So the other examples of that are the four-inch mill areas. What did we end up doing there?
This discussion is not about four-inch mill areas. Please, let's not.
I can have the conversation with the council.
I understand, but I want to point out that we are not talking about.
It's all, it's the whole picture. So if you want to understand the whole picture of what happened here, it is part of the discussion. You want me to proceed? So the four-inch milled areas, nothing held up underneath. I shouldn't say nothing. A large portion of it didn't hold up underneath. There was nothing under there to hold it. So what do we do with it? Question came. What are we going to do with this? It's soft. It's falling apart. We got all these streets we did four-inch milling on. We can't just pave them the way they are. We sat down with you guys and with the engineer, your engineer, in good faith to come up with a good plan to fix those efficiently, fairly, quickly, and to make them good and strong. And we did that in good faith with you guys to fix all of that because that was a major, major problem. What did we come up with? There's a change order for cement treated base to the tune of $276,000. That was the change order.
And that was approved by us.
And that was approved by you. We came up with a plan. We suggested, we got the pricing. We got somebody in. The day after, you approved it and started on because it was holding up this whole project. There was $276,000. I don't know if that's what the final outcome was, or if it actually grew from that and ended up being more on that last estimate. Okay? What does it say in there? "After the asphalt was milled from these roadways, it became apparent that there were soft areas which needed to be addressed." Same thing we're seeing in the two-inch milled areas. The strength that wasn't there underneath wasn't there. Saw that in the four-inch areas. Saw it in the two-inch areas. What do we have in the areas that are set up to be chip sealed? We didn't do any work on them. You crack sealed them and chip sealed them. The crack sealing is double what the plans called for. Plans called for 60,000 feet of crack sealing. We're at 126,000 feet. Why is that? The soundness, the strength isn't there. The pavement is weaker than what anticipated it to be. It's the whole picture. It's the whole town. We've seen it everywhere. So why would you think the two-inch areas would be any different?
So you're saying from the time that they estimated that it would be 60,000 feet of tar?
Crack ceiling.
Crack ceiling, that we had 60,000 more feet cracked up in that time?
I don't know how they arrived at 60,000 feet.
I don't think that's, I don't think.
I'm not saying that either, Jared. I don't know how they arrived at 60,000, but that's what the plans called for. And I know our subcontractor did 126,000 feet to get it all done. But it's the whole picture of this is what the conditions were here in town, and it's part of the two-inch milling. That's what happened. We have, I have another example back from your July 24th meeting. This is out of your minutes where Luke was talking about the shared use path out there along the highway and what to do with that. The original plan was remove the asphalt and replace it at the same elevation. Based on underground conditions, experience on the streets, there are concerns that the base may not stand up to the equipment and will require additional working costs. You guys remember that conversation?
That's against it.
No, but it was based on, this says it was based on that the conditions aren't good underneath there, just like we're seeing everywhere else. So what did we do? We came back with a proposal for you on what to do, some options on the shared use path. So we grounded up, left the milling in place. They agreed to, you agreed to, paved over top of it rather than get down into those poor base conditions.
You know why that discussion started happening is because you guys didn't want to do it the original way that we wanted.
The concrete?
Yeah.
Which got us the job, right?
Possibly.
Well, if you'd went with that concrete element, we wouldn't have got the job, right? So, but it's just, it's showing of what actually you have here. So, but it's just, it's showing of what actually you have here. And, and it's a pretty good case of the problems that we encountered all around town. Not just the four inch, not just the two inch, even the streets with the crack sealing, even on the bike path everywhere. That, that's what we ran into. So we basically had a, an agreement with you or what we thought was an agreement to do this patching. And to move forward to dig these areas out, put mix in and pave over them. We had given you a price to do that, twenty-eight dollars and twenty cents a ton over and above the bid price. The extra cost for patching because of the slowness and what it takes to do patching. The DOT spec for doing patching, which is the same spec that where the milling comes from, is thirty-one dollars a ton. But in good faith, we negotiated with you at twenty-eight twenty. The spec, the contract that we have says thirty-one. That's what patching is. But we negotiated it down for a better price for you guys, what I thought was fair. The milling spec, I believe Jared brought this up at the meeting last time, of what the milling spec says. So I just made a copy for you. Highlighted in the elbow there, milling pavement surface. It says place the pavement overlay within five calendar days of milling the pavement surface. That's what it says. Doesn't say anything about who's responsible if you don't. It's who pays for all that. No, it doesn't. No, it doesn't. Let me see, please. That's what it says. And I'm not arguing with you, I'm talking with the council. That's what it says.
We don't have the updated spec.
I have the spec book right here. And then I'll.
So, so when I, when I read this quoted statement, it says coordinate milling and paving. Operations so that no section of milled roadway has public or construction traffic operating on it for more than five days. If public or construction traffic operates on the milled surface for more than five days. Repair the roadway as directed by the engineer at no additional cost to the department in, in parentheses, city. End of, end of quote. Is that directly out of our contractual language?
Two thousand fourteen.
Those are supplemental specifications, latest edition that was added to the contract.
Was, was, is this in our proposal, in our contract?
Says, says. DOT specifications and supplemental specifications, that's in the, that was added in the supplemental specification that was in force when you guys signed that. It's not in the blue book, but it is in the supplementals.
And, and we're, we're, we should have access to those supplemental.
It's right on the DOT website.
So, one of the things that, um, I wanna point out is we had that agreement for the patching to do it. Nothing got marked. Our guy went out there and said, we're out here paving, we gotta, we gotta fix these areas. What are we gonna do regularly, every day, every day with these guys waiting on what to do? And when it first came up, the first time was at a weekly meeting and Luke was gone. And he was gone at the next meeting and we had to wait for him to come back to look at these areas to determine what we were gonna do. And that's where I alluded to, that we waited a week or longer in times for some answers.
So like I say, I spent, spent my night watching video last night. And, and nowhere in those conversations did I, did I hear a conversation come up to say, we're, we're still waiting for direction or. Everything that you just said and that, you know, with, with Luke not being there and all that. I didn't hear any concerns or statements in those, in the video of those meetings saying, hey, we're still hanging out there, wondering what to do and stuff like that. I never heard any, any conversations to, to the liking of that.
Well, until those areas get marked for patching, we don't know what they should be.
I never heard any conversations saying, we're still waiting for, for these areas to get marked and stuff like that. And numerous times in the discussions, in the video of these weekly construction meetings. I heard the statement that the question being asked, is there anything else of concern, uh, from the city, from, from you? It was, it was a question asked around, around the horn.
So you're saying in the weekly meetings, there was never any talk about what's gonna happen with the patching?
I didn't hear the, 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 the concerns with delays on, on anybody's part. I was hearing everybody saying, yep, everything's going good now, you know, there, there would be conversations about, you know, broken up curves or, you know, all these other.
Probably, probably the reason for that is because never along the way did we get told that we weren't gonna get paid for this. Till we were all done. Nobody said anything to us about not getting paid till we were all done.
We had a conversation at our city commission meeting when we were in the process of approving some of the, the patching costs and everything like that. That, that we were, we, we weren't going to take the time in the commission meeting to have the discussions that we were having here today. So we were taking care of, you know, the bill payment part of it, but we were, we, we left it wide open and that's in city commission meetings where.
Well, on estimate number three, like I mentioned, you paid for eleven hundred and four ton patching on estimate three. And there was some patching in there that was contention at that time.
Yes.
Okay?
Yes.
And, and there was some patching there that they, that there was some contention about, for whatever reason, it not getting paid for at that time. But it was gonna get resolved. But eleven hundred and four ton, but was paid for.
I understand.
There was no question. Nobody brought up anything about it.
In, in that very meeting when we approved that, we talked about it. That we weren't going to get into the details of, of going back and forth on whether or not extended periods of time caused more breakage or anything.
We never heard that. Nope, we never heard that. About that being extended periods of time causing it.
Me and, me and, me and guys like Nancy were here one evening, I don't know, in July or something. I know that we brought up, or, or not we, but I mean, it was brought up in the meeting about all that, I mean, these, 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 I mean, by cost. Might be a little part of your share.
Well, I don't know when that meeting took place or exactly. We started paving on July second, we started patching on July third.
This is when we did the walk around.
Yeah.
We were, we were actually patching on July third, it was the first day we started patching. And we patched one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Seventeen days of patching going on up there, but we did patching work.
And, and so, uh, let's go back to the cement treated base.
Quick one change of, yeah, did you? I didn't get the emails apparently. Did you send out the emails of the minutes of those weekly meetings we had those?
I just sent my notes.
But I thought someone was gonna send those, send those out, didn't really get those.
I never sent the email, I just kept track of my notes from my, from my meetings.
Okay. Does it say, I, I was at, at least half or maybe a little more, and I, I don't remember. I have had a few confrontations in my time, but I don't remember a lot of the discussion of. We were so concerned about Luke being off for two weeks or we're waiting for days on end for responses.
Well, most of that.
I think there's more meetings here than you by the way, actually.
Yeah, I didn't attend the weekly meetings. Cause that was Ted's.
Cause you keep saying at those meetings, we talked about.
Well, and.
Were, were, was that in the notes somewhere?
And I watched those meetings last, with the intention, paying very close attention to, to the issues at hand. And that, and like I said, I watched them last night, so, so it's fresh on my mind.
So were there any issues brought up that all this patching was done and it's the contractor's fault and he's responsible for it? Was that ever mentioned?
There was discussions that we.
In those weekly meetings?
Yeah, yeah. In, in the latter, latter ones here, there was some discussion on that and I.
Well, we met, when, when did we meet with you guys the first time?
That even in our walk around, we discussed a lot of patching and whose responsibility it was gonna be to pay for those. Because of basically the open, how long it was open and, and other issues, but yeah, there, there was discussion on that when we were.
They never got told us, you guys had those.
A lot of the points that I brought up during meetings were, were comments. They didn't lead to big conversations.
Right.
You know, I brought up my points and what we had and people looked around the room and if they had something to add, we, they added it. But we didn't have a, a big conversation on, on every single point. It was, these are very brief meetings. We laid the things out there.
I understand. And, and that, and that's my point, is that, that I wasn't hearing, what, what you're alluding to tonight, that we were so concerned on this. I, I didn't hear that flavor come out in those meetings.
Maybe I portrayed it wrong. We were out in the field paving and wanting to pave the streets and get these things paved. But we had to deal with the patching in front of us while we were paving. And our paving folks had the frustration of, where are we supposed to patch? We gotta get the patching done. He had.
Fair enough there. But that's, that's the purpose of the, of the, the, the weekly construction meetings is to bring those things to, to the decision-making.
Well, everybody knew they were out there. You guys, them, us, we all knew that these areas were out there.
I think there's some, absolutely.
And then it had to be decided by a change order what was to be done with it.
Correct.
And that's outside the scope of what we were supposed to.
And we're not, we're not contesting that, that there isn't some, some validity to, to some of the stuff here. What we're here to talk about today is, is some of the, the long exposed areas and stuff like that, whether or not. And because clearly, if you, if you're doing road construction out there, something that has that milling out, you're not gonna leave a road like that. That's not designed for, for long-term traffic. Fair?
Correct.
And, and so the longer, uh, uh, something like that is exposed, the more damage you're going to, to see to that. Even, even areas, even areas that maybe prior to them getting crumbling and stuff like that, might have been, well, okay.
We fixed these in good faith for you guys.
No question.
We did. And we expected to get paid for it. We expected to get paid for it. And it wasn't till we were done. When all of a sudden this came to a head and says, you're not gonna get paid for it.
No, it wasn't.
No, it wasn't.
About a busy council meeting.
So, um, the, the other thing on this change order too, that's quite interesting by the cement treated base change order. Which was to, to add the cement treatment. Um, on this change order, the, the engineer deducted two hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars for the asphalt savings off the job. As a counterbalance to the additional cost for the cement treated base. So, and what happened here is there was contingencies built into the bid with the asphalt cement. To help cover additional costs and to the tune of two hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars built in for asphalt cement on the job.
Can you explain that, Jared?
Yeah, I can explain that. So we did this job and the contractors had the opportunity or option of bidding this with twenty percent wrap in it. But they didn't have to. We didn't know what, yeah, we didn't know what, we didn't know what we're gonna get. So we bid, if someone else bid the job or you bid it without using the wrap.
Right.
It could bend a six percent AC content.
So there's two hundred and fifty-five thousand dollar savings to the project on oil for us using wrap material. That was put on the change order against the cement treated base.
Is that material the stuff we had?
This is what we took off the street.
Okay, the, the recycling.
Basically the two inch milling, basically the two inch milling, the good stuff that isn't all chunky. That's rap, recycled asphalt pavement, that's what wrap is.
But is, but is the intent of that just basically saying, we, we had this contingency built in there? And we're now, we're using some of that contingency in the form of some of that?
I, no, when the, when the project is bid, we don't know exactly how he's gonna bid it. And they provided a mixed design, one of their sub consultants, probably Midwest Destin or Terracotta or Ron or somebody. And they sampled their material and they said, based on this twenty-five percent wrap in our mix. We only need three percent asphalt content on this job or three point two or whatever it is. So we paid for the actual amount of asphalt, asphalt cement that's used. We don't know what that's gonna be until the job is bid, cause everybody's angry, it could be different. So it's kind of an estimate.
The contract had six percent. And once we had the mixed design. As an incidental, not really related to the cement stabilized base, but as an incidental to try to continue to reflect the accuracy of the actual cost. We said, alright, they're not gonna use all six percent. We're gonna back it off to three, three and a half percent for contract quantities. And release that money into the contingency to be used for other stuff.
You agree?
Yeah. My question is, why couldn't it be used against the patching?
It's way more money than what was incurred in the patching. Why is the decision made to use it against a cement treatment, why not against the patching? Because as Jared Spur said, we're here to talk about money. This is about the dollars. It isn't about that we did the work, it isn't about that the patching was done. There's a hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars worth of patching that we did out there.
Well, why can't, why can't the savings on that asphalt cement be used against the patching? Why does it need to go against a cement treated base?
It's because Ted and I were standing here when this all came up and we were trying to figure out how to get this stuff paid for. And we looked at it and he said, here, you got the savings here and here, we can get this AC.
Do the same thing with the patching.
Why not?
Why? Because it doesn't have, you know, what you're applying it against is not really, you know, there's, it released additional funds. The additional funds help to offset additional costs and other things. You know, it doesn't, I don't, to me, it doesn't make a lot of sense to be looking and saying, well, it should be used here against this or versus against that. Um, the, the issue for me is still, we're really only talking about the, some of the patching, not even all, just some of the patching.
We haven't told how much your, our aren't gonna pay. That's why, that's why we're talking about that today. And I made the statement early on. I, I'm not looking for a deduct of a hundred and eighty-some thousand dollars here because it's clear to me. Pictures and in discussions throughout the whole project that immediately upon milling, we saw areas that we knew there had to be corrective action. We, we talked about that since, since.
So the question is, who's gonna make that decision and tell us what we're gonna get paid?
And that's what we're here to, to have, again, good faith conversation with one another. And, and what I, as a commissioner, wanna understand on behalf of our citizens is. It just seems to me, not as an expert, but a road once milled down like that. Is not designed for, for continuous traffic on there for, for long periods of time. Before you go about making whatever kind of corrective actions, whether it's just simply paving over it or not. And I'm convinced that the longer it was open, you, you made the comment earlier that you start with a piece of damage like this here. You continue to drive over, it's gonna expand. And I've seen good material that, that as, as you, you get down even to the, the good stuff. Because you're now running on the edge of that good stuff. I just saw an asphalt project we did out at the gas plant. Soon as people started going over the edge that didn't have the dirt on it, it was good asphalt, but it's not really designed to be driven on like that.
Well, I, I think these pictures show that it wasn't good.
Well, divide, divide wasn't in terrible shape when you milled that up, was it? And that's, that's, that's the one, that's one of the biggest.
There were places that showed.
Places.
Strep. Spots, yeah.
Right. But by, but by the time we got to the point where we were having full-blown discussions on, on doing this treatment to that street there. It was really starting to look very, very crappy all over the place.
What, what I'm bringing up is two different things. When it shows deflection, when you drive across it, it may not be broken up and chunky and falling apart. But as you're driving across with not necessarily a heavy vehicle and, and that road is rippling underneath. It's hard to see, you gotta stop and you gotta let that vehicle come by. You can see that pavement flex. And that'll happen, that'll hold that way for quite a while, but you get anything with any weight on it, boom, then it starts falling apart and breaking with the, the strength underneath.
I'm not contesting anything you say there. All of this whole, this whole conversation about the flexing and everything, I'm just hearing about recently. Again, I'm watching and listening for those key terms and stuff as I'm watching the videos of the weekly construction meetings. There again, I didn't hear conversations talking about this flexing and stuff until just in our last couple of discussions that we've been having here.
Which is what I mean by soft.
I, I understand what it means from what you're saying.
I'm sorry, I didn't put it in a term that, that made more sense that with that, you know, when we're out there paving, we're walking along the pavement on the highway or anywhere. And when that roadway's flexing right there, we know that that's.
My, my biggest contention in this, in this whole discussion is that I feel, as, as a taxpayer in this city, that, that there were some of the streets that were left open. Because of them being left open longer, it would seem to me that the damage became more extensive.
Now, one of the reasons why they were open longer is we had the issues with the cement treatment we had to deal with. That we had to throw resources at that. We had to get all that done and ready to pave. That took time. We had the patching that we did have to do, which slowed our production down immensely. Slowed us down immensely. Because patching, like I explained to these guys before, it's usually about thirty ton an hour type work. Normal paving type stuff can be a hundred to a hundred and fifty ton an hour. So you have a record of what we patched each day and, and the quantities we put out and the mix. And the days we were patching, our, our production was hugely down by a large, large. And the days we were patching, our, our production was hugely down by a large margin, not even close.
But some of the patching could have been avoided if the streets were closed up earlier. And you have to agree with that? Some of the, some of it, not all of it.
Maybe fringe areas of these same patch areas.
But if they had the small little spot and it was open for thirty days.
Wasn't Divide mill that first? Wasn't Divide mill that first? That's one of the first reasons.
I don't know the exact order.
I don't know if it's actually divided. First one was, um, consult.
I, I know.
It was mailed out first.
No, Divide wasn't mailed till six twenty, so the second week. It started on six thirteen. Divide Street, the West Dead End, the Fayette Drive was on six twenty. Six twenty is when Divide mailed the good plan. So, um, you know, we did all this stuff basically in good faith. They, they wanna use the DOT specs, you wanna use our contract. In the contract, there's verbiage in there for change conditions and additional cost due to the contractor. In fact, at the meeting the other night, the engineer brought up all these overruns and extra things that occurred. They got extra expenses and wanna get paid for it. So do we. We have huge changes. Because of the cement treated base, because of all the extra concrete work that's done, the extra mix that's put out there, that slowed us down. There's verbiage in the specs that allow us to file a claim and ask for payment for all of our extra items that we've done. Changing condition, changing the nature of the work. And that's the direction that you're forcing us into without going on with the patching that we did in good faith efforts. And if that's the choice you guys wanna make, that's a decision you wanna do, we can do that. It's not the male way of doing things. We'd like to negotiate it. We'd like to work it out. We'd like to be fair. We think we've been more than fair all along. We were open and honest with our schedule and how we were gonna go about doing this. We didn't veer very far from it.
So your negotiation was eleven thousand six. That was, that was your negotiation on this?
Now, the other night, yeah, there was, there was discussion about using the, uh, instead of paying the higher patching price for the areas. Maybe simply pay the, the bid price of asphalt for the patching areas.
Well, I, I made the comment that, um, typically if there's some argument about whether something should be patched or not, is that. Okay, the mix went in there, the asphalt's in there, so we'll pay for it. But we're not gonna pay you the patching price to do that, which is additional twenty-eight dollars and twenty cents. Which is what we took out on the bigger areas. But, but right now, where you guys stand on what you did on the last estimate, um, none of the removals paid for. None of the mix is paid for and none of it's paid for as patch. It's just completely.
Where's the number two thousand and ninety-four square yards? What is, what is that equivalent?
Two thousand and ninety-four tons. So.
No, what is, I, I've got it right here.
Those are, those are my, my numbers.
Okay, okay, that's tons. Alright.
Two thousand and ninety-four tons of patching is what we've.
That was, that was.
Twenty-one seventeen, but we're only out, but.
I mean, that's, that's just on the two-inch mill, there was some other.
So that's in its entirety?
Yeah.
Great. That, that's all of the patching on the two-inch mill space that we have, yeah.
And, and suffice it to say that, that there was a fair amount of the two-inch. That immediately upon stripping that down, it was evident that there was going to be the need for patching.
Fair?
A fair amount, yes, of course. But, but at this point, to quantify what percent of that two thousand and ninety-four tons. Of patching was, was in those particular areas, we don't, we don't have.
Well, we kind of went through it once. You kind of went through it all when I sat here with Nancy and Jerry the first time. And, and I left that meeting with the impression that the majority of it had all been justified, like seventy-five percent or more. Based on you going through each street and each thing and how it came to be.
Yeah, here's sixteen hundred, is I think what I can. I, I think it might be helpful just to go back through one more time real quick and I will give her points to me too. But, you know, just, just as a quick overview of what we did. So there's two thousand and ninety-four tons of patching that we had identified on the two-inch mill overlay streets. There was other patching that was not associated with this, and it's not in this discussion. Of that, we've got fifteen hundred and eighteen tons of patching that were patches that were done on streets that weren't. Read, that weren't paved back in within five days, just strictly following the numbers. So of that, there's four hundred and some odd tons that there's just for one reason or another, there's no dispute over and we've recommended payment on that. And you guys have paid for that. So we're ready to cut down the number, not talking about all the patching. We're only talking about the patching that was on two-inch mill overlay that wasn't done for some other reason or that was not identified immediately. Because the ones that we identified immediately, we took right off the top, we're not talking about those anymore. So it's not, we're not talking about everything. Now, of the fifteen hundred and eighteen tons, which is a patch area of just over sixty-eight hundred square yards. That's what we're talking about. We're not saying that a hundred percent, that the, the contractor is one hundred percent responsible. Not at all, as they've said as well. All we're asking is, is it zero percent responsible? And I think that's the same question you guys are asking. Is there some responsibility on the private contractor because of the fact that some of these were not? And we're not saying that the pictures that he brought up, some of those, maybe they're in some of the areas that we've already paid for that are, are even questioning. Maybe if they aren't, maybe it's something that is part of that, it's, it's, that answers to the middle somewhere. Yeah, that's it.
I got a couple of points that I wanna just make about what you guys talked about. I don't, I don't recall any time when they were waiting a week or two weeks for any of the, the decisions to make. Luke was in Hawaii, we talked to Luke on the telephone when he was in Hawaii. We made decisions very fast and I, I can take offense to that.
And we thought, I think we made our decision pretty fast too.
I don't, I don't, I, I disagree.
How many of the areas did you mark? How many patch areas did you mark? How many did you mark?
I went through with, um, what else is this? No, there are people, people that send them marking.
Well, who's wait, who marked?
Myself and Pete.
For how long?
All of them.
Two days.
We went through and we started marking them up.
Yeah, for two days.
This morning ago.
For two days. And then after that, he went ahead and marked them and you came behind and checked them.
Yeah, we checked together. We became a common agreement that said, yes, we feel this is what needs to be patched.
Is, is, is that not appropriate?
Normally the engineer would mark.
But they were, but if they mutually agreed, it sounds like they, they understood how they were working together in this situation, no?
Well, we were pushing to get them done ahead of time so we could pave them. So the, the issue was they needed to get patched before we could pave them. So if we couldn't go to a street to pave it, I mean, we paved a lot of streets in a short period of time. We had to have a plan the day before where we were going, which means that those areas had to be patched ahead so we know where to go to. So it was a inconvenience for us not having all that done and marked out and laid out from the get-go.
And those discussions were clear on those Thursday meetings. He said, we can't, we can't pave and stop, look at a patch together, decide if we're gonna tear it out. Well, if milling or the pave machine sits there. Then those are, those are clear.
So, so to me, to me, it sounds like a process was put into place then to, to, to accommodate that, so, so nobody had to, to wait.
No, that wasn't ahead. This was while we're paving. This, this wasn't ahead. This, this is while we're there paving. It, it wasn't all in advance.
It was the day up or?
There were, there were some areas though that actually did fall apart during paving, while you guys were going. So it fell apart in front of the paper.
Those, those are unavoidable.
In this situation, you can't do much more.
Exactly.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't, I wouldn't say that we, we sat there and said, you guys gotta hold out, we gotta go do this. I mean, there was, there were times when we went and we did, like you said, the day before. And we marked these patches out and we came to a mutual agreement that says, this is exactly what we feel needs to be patched. This is what we're going to mill. We measured it together, we marked it together, and that was what was decided.
Okay, so you tried to squeeze that all into a five-day window? How's that ever gonna get done? Because we had, like they pointed out, thirty, forty days at times to look at these mail streets, figure out what needed to be patched.
I guess I'm not sure, I'm not sure what I'm hearing here. First I heard you say two days, now I hear you saying five days. So I, I, I'm not, I'm not following how.
No, what I'm saying is you go back to the spec that says you gotta pave it within five days. How, how are you gonna do that when you've got these issues to deal with? And it's not very realistic, is, is my point.
Well, I, I just wanna point out some of the things that I disagree with. And I just took some notes here. Uh, you started by talking about the schedule and your schedule did change. You said pre-con that milling the two-inch overlay areas would not begin until just before the finishing the reconstruction areas. That changed. Um, and then the areas to get two-inch overlay, they show the after, so it's not to allow much traffic on pavement plus damage. Contractor plans to apply a light coat of tack coat and mill surface to help hold it in place until overlay takes place. So there, there were some slight changes to the schedule. I, I disagree that we need to change site conditions that will be valid, because there was about fifty soil pourings. You guys did subsequently do another thirty or forty pavement course yourselves. So you, you did know what you were getting, getting into it and.
We didn't get the fifty pourings.
You took them.
Yours.
Now, where's yours? You can have those too.
The soil pourings?
Soil pourings were done before bidding. You guys had access to those during bidding, yes.
Where?
Where?
Did you ask for them? It's right in the specs. It's how we get ahold of you.
Because if that's not true, then. They're in the contract. We are specification, so where is it? The soil pourings are available, you have to request them. As the standard.
Well, they, they obviously weren't very valid when you look at those pictures and you see what was there after we milled it.
They're there.
Well, during, during our discussions, we all agreed that you could, you could do a soil pouring and then ten feet away, you do it again and it gets completely reinforced.
Totally. I'm not saying that they're, they're, exactly. I'm just not gonna be case for change site conditions, I don't believe. We've done plenty of two-inch milling overlay projects. I've done them personally in Oaks and Paramount in the last five years. I know Luke's done lots in his career. So I guess, based on the. We, things changed and it's here. Again, I disagree that the patching was not done immediately. Just, just support what you guys are saying. We all watched the patching grow and grow over time too. There is a specification, did say five days. They're, they're bound to, the specifications that are in the contract, you can't just pick and choose the ones you want to work with, the ones you don't wanna work with. So they bid it based on the five days. Had it been a twenty-one days or a forty-two days, they would have bid it differently. And everybody would have bid it differently. So that if you allow them to leave it open more, there is a little more risk. So it, it actually, if we had written the specs so that there was a twenty-one day window or a twenty-eight day window, we may have gotten better bid prices from people. Because they wouldn't have had to be right after each other doing this type of work. But there would have been more risk on the city of leaving those streets open longer. So I guess, uh, it disappeared at that point. And I guess, just to confirm, you guys did speak at the city council meeting and let them know, you put on a notice that a lot of the patching was not gonna be paid for. And that was, I believe, at the July council meeting. So, um, disagree with me if you want to, but, um.
My argument's not with you. You're working for them and I'm working for them.
I don't, I don't. So ultimately, he did lay out a scenario. Um, you can negotiate a fair amount with them. Um, ultimately, the city is paying the bills. So the process would be, correct me if I'm wrong, is you guys can make a recommendation for payment. If, based on what you think is appropriate and they can then, if they disagree, they can file a claim against you. And, and say this is not fair. So ultimately, there is a, a city decision here. If you don't think the number is one eighty-nine and you think the number should be different, then, um, they can either accept it or file their claim and say it's not fair. Correct me if I'm wrong, Ted. No? But, let's run that. You know, we, we had, we were up and we did that, that patch from the north end of First Street, where the street was heating. We dug down and milled that out. Uh, we were all standing up there and Luke walked over to the edge of the asphalt that was still in place. He picked it up in his hand, did this and it crumbled. Minnesota was black pavement, it looked like good pavement, it fell apart. There was nothing there. Look at all the patches that were on that street. It was all the way down. And only two of those patches are in color. That whole street was like that. That thing was soft, it was nasty. You know, and to just isolate out that, okay, this patch is okay, but this patch is not, when the whole street is under the same conditions. That doesn't make any sense to me.
I think we did agree that when we sat down, if we're looking at it before we could cut the patch open, it would break.
It, it, it looked good.
Yeah, they've been there for a long time.
For a long time. But, you know, when that stuff's done by developers, you don't know what you're getting. But as soon as we cut into that, as soon as we disturbed that crust. Literally, I mean, I looked at them, I was like.
So maybe the decision.
We're not blaming.
We're not going to include that area and pay for it, if that's a true decision.
But I'm just, I'm just trying to say that.
We know that there's some terrible spots that have to be.
There was, it was tough out there.
And we, as a board on, on, on Monday night, we did say, we don't wanna band-aid things, we wanna do them right. And I think we got a product that's good and we're not disputed that. You guys did a nice job. I heard from our community members over and over saying. What a nice job you guys are doing, courteous and traffic control, things like that. It's not, it's not.
Normally, when we run into these type of cases, um, your representative would tell you what they think is reasonable and fair. And then that would be on the estimate and then if, if we had some argument, we'd come back to you and say, or, or converse with them one-on-one and say. Why didn't you pay for this or why didn't you pay for that? We don't know where you stand, because we were at eleven oh four on estimate number three. And then estimate number four, we went down to six hundred. We have no idea where you stand. That, that's, that's why we're flabbergasted by this whole thing. I mean, and, and you should probably get representation from your folks on what they think is fair. You hired them to be out there to monitor this and watch it and look at it. And what is that? And, and like Luke stood here and said, you know, it's somewhere between zero and a hundred and seventy thousand. Well, yeah, but where? Where is that? And, and is that the council's responsibility to know what that number should be?
No.
I don't think so. You know? I, I don't think so.
As, as Dan has mentioned, a hundred and eighty-nine is not realistic and eleven thousand six dollars is far from, in my opinion, acceptable either. We do have some numbers that we've got written down, but.
You know, we all know that there's areas out there, there's patching. You know, if we brought it up right away, you know, may not have had a big conversation about it. But we did bring it up at these meetings several times that the areas are soft, the areas are thin, you know, letting you know that there's, could be potential out there. We did talk about the patch and what are we gonna do if we get to these patches? You know, some of them were like, we have to review them on a patch-by-patch basis. But on some of them, we gotta move forward. We can't just stop progress and go. And we had those discussions. But we didn't get that comment that, oh, by the way, we're not paying for it. Until the estimate came out later that, okay, now we're not, now there's, this is your fault. That was never discussed while we were out there doing that.
What, what we had conversations on at the city commission meeting was that there was concern on, on some of these streets being left open so much longer. And that we're not experts on it, but we, we feel there needs to be some discussions, because it seemed that additional damage was occurring. Because of some of those being left open that long. And that we weren't going to spend the time at the commission meeting to have the discussions and get into the weeds of that discussion. Uh, you know, with the, the numerical stuff, uh, um, monies and stuff like that, that, that we would go ahead and we would talk about that at, at a later time. So.
Part of our thing was just with all, with everything we had going on and had to do. And then once we started doing the patching, that slowed us down. That caused them to stay open even longer. And, 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 and that, I don't believe was our, was our fault. We didn't do that on purpose. We had to patch the ones before we could pave them. And that just takes time.
Why did you guys change your schedule? And mill the over, mill the streets right away and not after the reconstruction?
We did some of both at the same time. We were going back and forth. We didn't go and just mail all the two-inch streets first. We went back and forth in and amongst them. Because it takes a long time to mail those streets, get them cleaned up and get them ready to pave. Three times as long as it takes to pave it.
So what you originally said, you weren't gonna mail until after? So what you originally said, you weren't gonna mill until after you're done with reconstruction areas? And change that.
We did some reconstruction, so they were working on that and we started milling two-inch. And then we're ready for the next reconstruction, we went and did that.
And because your sub wanted to get out of town and do his next job. He wanted to mill everything.
He's working for us. That's entirely up to us and what we tell him to do.
Right.
Well, I, I hear you say, I hear you say that, but, but then in our conversation the other day, you said your, your contract here left, left town and hadn't really told anybody about it and stuff like that. So I mean.
Well, that was the concrete guy.
And they're not part of your.
Yeah, they are, they are, but, but what you have to realize is that the amount of, of the changes and all the extra concrete work that's added here. They, they did other jobs and they have other contracts and they have other commitments and they only have so many resources. And when stuff gets added to jobs, if they were on another job, that would slow them to get here. When they're here and stuff gets added, that slows them to get to the next one. That, that's the main problem with the concrete guys. There's a, there's just so much added extra stuff. They're struggling to get it all done because they have other contracts and other commitments as well. And if every job they have grows and gets bigger, it, you just can't get it all done.
You mentioned that they should get a recommendation on a percentage of that or the issue. Let you know where you stand. Would you entertain some type of, if, if it's not the hundred eighty-nine thousand dollars?
Do we have a choice? You know, we, we have to, we have to entertain whatever they tell us and then decide what we wanna do going forward. But that's our choice.
I think we've made points back and forth. We've said where we other, the other person stands and I think we're full rate in some cases and I think that we're to that point unless you guys disagree.
I, I agree with that statement. I'm, I'm in a position now as, as a member of this council that I'm not comfortable with a hundred eighty-nine. I'm not com- comfortable with eleven thousand. Am I equipped to, to say, throw the dart? Yeah, I, I, I'm not comfortable making that decision. I would be looking maybe for, for a more succinct recommendation that, that, that we could work with. And then, and I portray that to you guys and see if that's mutually agreeable. And, and if it's not mutually agreeable, then we, we, we maybe have further discussions to understand where we need to go from there.
Okay, well, the, you know, the, I'm, I'm totally understand what you're saying. I totally agree with what you're saying. I, I feel like that we've made a lot of other good faith efforts on this project. To cut the cost and help you guys. And, and, and I feel like you, you're happy and willing to accept those things, but now this patching thing is, is our fault and our problem.
But I feel like the city's made a lot of quick decisions and has spent a lot of money as well. Regarding the CSP and a lot of, maybe the city's done a lot of.
Those are design issues here. That, that does, that doesn't have anything to do with us. We never questioned any of those prices. We didn't question any of the prices on, on a lot of things.
But, but you are, you, you're, I mean, you're bringing up the, the fact that you, you did a lot of things in good faith. And, and I think equally, you know, for, for us, um, you know, coming in for emergency meetings and stuff so we can make quick decisions and stuff. We, we, we made sacrifices as well.
We appreciate that.
So, you know, so it, so it goes both ways. And we're not complaining about the workmanship or, 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 or the, the quality of the product that we're getting or anything like that. We're, we're watching out for, for our taxpayers and, and the, the city in general. And making sure that, that we're making the best decisions on behalf of our constituency here.
Right.
And, and.
So one of the things that goes into that is, you know, and we haven't sent any bills for extra work or extra things. But to clean up those areas and get those ready and do that patching is, is really extensive. You know, I mentioned to these guys in the meeting we had before, that the mix overran by five thousand tons on this job.
So, so let me, let me ask you this question. I've, I've been involved in con- construction out at the plant, different projects and stuff like that. And, and there isn't, there isn't an organization that hasn't come in and bid on a project expecting it to go without any problems.
Correct.
So, so this isn't your first rodeo. You've been involved in projects, maybe not to this caliber in, in a city before is what I've been hearing, some comments made, but, but certainly you're experienced in, in this type of work and so clearly in your bidding process, you're expecting to see some of those unexpected.
Correct.
So, so.
But we can't see them all. Can't see them all.
I understand.
And some of them end up being quite expensive where, where we would say, hey, this is a change and we feel like we're entitled to some more.
And, and, and that's, and that's what, what I've seen in all of my experience in construction. When it gets to that point, nobody is shy to, to bring a change order in to, to cover your costs for, for those added things.
So that's what you suggest we should probably do then?
I'm suggesting that if, I, I would be remiss to think that you guys didn't build some of that into your, your bid that you put up.
Pretty tough bidding work right now out there in this.
And that's the answer that I would expect to hear from, from any contractor that I'm.
I mean, you saw the actual numbers were between us and my brother. That tells you right there how tough, how tight the bidding is, you know? And, 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 you know, back to your guys' decision to choose us, hopefully because of this patching, you don't feel like you made the wrong decision because we don't feel that way. And I think, I know Jerry talked to some of the other recommended places where we worked. And, and one of the things we pride ourselves in is trying to negotiate these problems, try to be fair, try to work with it. We're not the big corporate company that, uh, would have brought in here today three attorneys. Because that's what would have happened with them.
And there, and there's, there, there's not ill feelings. I don't, I don't think anybody's sitting here thinking that, that, that you're not being cooperative. We just want to do what, what's best for our constituency here. We wanna make the best educated decision here. And, and again, I think the, the issue at hand is that it's, it's felt by me personally, I, I can't speak for the rest of these guys, that, that we've got conditions out there that, that were exacerbated because of the, the extended time.
That's the question. Exactly.
And I understand you ran into some of these other things that took time and everything like that, but before we even started running into, into a lot of that catching stuff, we, we already at that point had some of these streets that were beginning to crumble more and more because they, they, they had been exposed for longer periods of time.
I, I understand what you're saying, but if you think about that, you know, most of that two-inch milling didn't start till the week of June twentieth. Our asphalt plant was here on July second. That's like twelve days. So we didn't intentionally go out and mail a bunch of stuff and try to hide and run away from it. That was not our intent from day one. Did some wait longer? Yes, they did because of the sequence of everything. Yeah, there's no arguing that.
And, 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 and our point is that it, there, there's, there's some, we feel there's, there's some shared responsibility in that.
Right. So, um, you know, the major cost into this work for us is, is the cost of the material and the oil that went into it. So our base, um, bid would be to put that stuff down normally. So, you know, as far as what if, what do we think is fair or what do we think we could negotiate out? If there's some of those areas that you think are due to our extended time and not getting to them right away and you don't feel like you should pay the extra patching price for those. I, I guess I can understand that from where you're coming from on why you think those occurred.
Yes.
But, but I'm, I go back to that, uh, statement I made a couple of times in that the asphalt itself is in the streets and it's to the better, betterment of your community and the benefit of your people. So payment for that material to be there, I feel like that made those streets better, should last longer. You're getting a bang for your buck for that material to be there.
Yeah, and I, I agree with you. I'll support that, that there is benefit to that asphalt if they're worth thin areas. I agree with them. So I, I'd like with, I think, I agree with what you're recommending there, what you're suggesting there. That maybe we look at patches and look at that quantity and that price and we can make a recommendation to the city as far as what that quantity and cost is. And I guess you guys can decide if that's fair or not.
And then that if you brought, right, you'd bring us up for a next meeting then?
I wrote you a letter telling you what we, based on that, for instance, what that number would be. And then you guys can decide at next meeting if that's fair. I'll share the mail, say, no, the cost is, you, you dispute it at the meeting.
Well, I, I don't know if it has to be a meeting. I know you gotta make a decision on your next pay estimate if you're gonna approve it. And whatever you would decide on would be on there. And any payment we get up to the hundred and seventy thousand, we're gonna be happy with because we're, we're out that right now. So it's a matter of coming to final reconciliation at the end and.
And, and we wanna be fair as well. That, in, in, in our mind, we wanna make sure that, that, that we're, we're doing the right thing. So we're, we're not looking to, to gouge and and again, there's, there's no ill feelings here or anything like that. We just, we just wanna do what, what we feel is, is, is fair on this.
I just got a couple things, I guess. So then, so then I, like last meeting, this dollar, dollar amount is a hundred and, hundred and, hundred and maybe it's seventy-two.
It's a hundred eighty-nine minus the ten percent contingencies that we're holding on everything. So that was a confusion.
Yeah, you were already, you were already withholding ten percent of it, so.
The whole project.
Yeah, the overall, okay, so.
Cause the numbers.
Okay. So then, so then, so then like based on this, you know, I guess, all they guess, like catch work. Roughly at about, I guess, like twenty-one, 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 uh.
Twenty-one hundred tons.
Twenty, it's just under twenty-one hundred tons of the patching.
So then, so then, so then, so then like if we put a dollar like value on it per ton, or about like ninety dollars a ton, is that right?
It's.
It was like fifty.
Seventy-six, twenty. Seventy-six, twenty when you take, take the unit price for the tonnage plus the unit price for the patching, which is a per tonnage as well. It's seventy-six, twenty.
Four, so forty-eight dollars is our bid price for basic mix. We're paving on the streets for the two-inch overlay for the base bid. And our, we added twenty-eight, twenty for a patching cost. That's how you get to the seventy-six, twenty.
And that adder is because it's manual process, paint up and all that other stuff. Okay.
Also, I guess my, my, I guess my question to you, you know, you know, just as a like something to like consider is, I mean, I mean, I mean, what are your expenses on those patching, you know, you know, this, you know, power, oil, labor, you know? And then, and then like give it to us on just your expenses, expenses and no, and no, no kind of, I guess.
Overhead or profit?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, well, um, the, the, the seventy-six, twenty, um. That's a hard one to answer. I guess you would have to take the people's labor and time and isolate every one of them and every piece of equipment to just doing patching to figure out what your actual costs are on it. You know? Um, so to go back and say, what was our actual cost? All of that would have had to been tracked separately. And we're doing that at the same time that we're paving and this guy runs from here and that guy runs to there and the paver's sitting for a while, is running for a while. And, and that's why in our, one of our earlier change orders, when there was some patching, that we came up with the price of twenty dollars and twenty cents a ton for patching. And it was justified and they agreed to it because the DOT price for that, that is part of these same specs is thirty-one dollars a ton. So we actually offered less than that. And so you can, sometimes they, you know, it's, it's hard to, okay, we're gonna use the spec here and we're not gonna use it there. I mean, should have we negotiated a lower price for it when the spec clearly called out thirty-one dollars a ton? I mean.
That thirty-one dollars a ton is in a DOT, all DOT contracts. It's, it's in case you in, incur those type of costs on that job. It's a non-negotiable cost that the DOT sets up. And if we run into that, that's what they're willing to pay. And so it's just a standard cost that's in DOT contracts. It's called the PS, PS one schedule.
That answers your question as far as what their costs are for.
An asphalt.
Well.
We got a real.
Yeah, I mean.
If we just did patching all day, I could tell you what that price is based on the amount of tons they put out there. You take our total costs, add up the material, the oil, the equipment, the labor, all of our costs and divide that into however many tons they put out there that day and I could tell you what the price per ton is. But I can tell you that the twenty-eight, twenty is, is very fair. Actually, the DOT has two different rates. They have a machine place at thirty-one dollars a ton. And they have a hand place at forty-eight dollars a ton. And hand place would be, you know, skid steer shovel, something that's not put in with a paver. Which I don't know if we had too much of that. Typically what happens with that is, it's like not even a ton. Because a ton of mix is a lot of material put in by hand. So it's kind, that's kind of a neat point. There was some of that in really small areas along the curb or whatever, but ends up being such a small quantity, it's hardly worth even talking about.
Can I, can I say, I, I've, I've heard a lot of this, if you're looking at us to make a recommendation, um, probably the dollar amount. I do think that we're gonna have to visit probably, but paying the, we can't square yardage of, of the patches or the tonnage in the patches. And the overage cost for the patches, you multiply those together, it's, it's in the fifty-nine thousand dollar range. So in lieu of a hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollar deduct, something like a fifty-nine thousand dollar, um, deduct makes sense on paper. That's, that's only, I wanna say that, that's how I came up with this.
How did you come up with that number?
Twenty-one hundred times twenty-eight, twenty.
So you're saying all twenty-one hundred ton?
None of it would be paid at patch unless it's seventeen hundred. I have a look at the numbers just to make sure. There's some of that did come up initially. So yes, I'll look at the exact numbers that came up after the five-day window and times the twenty-eight, twenty overage fee. And then you pay the labor and material cost for things and it's, it's donating some labor then. I know it's real money, but it's donating some real, it's donating labor then to do those, those patches that went a lot slower. So I don't know if you consider that or not, but, um, that's gonna be, that's gonna be our explanation in lieu of the hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars.
I mean, it's hard to determine what areas were not just soft from the get-go versus what was soft over time or however you, you know, say it, but you know, that one street, I mean, we had, we were down to six hundred ton that, that you're saying was okay. First avenue alone is four hundred ton. You know, the streets that were, where the mix just fell apart. So I mean, now we're up to nine hundred, which is okay. Not twenty-one hundred. And of the others, of the other patches. It's very hard to go back now and say, this was your fault, this was not. You know, how, how do you do that? You know, when, as we're milling and as we're working out there and that whole payment is, and is doing that, and which is why I brought up those points. Not as a discussion, but you know, we brought them up. We got some soft areas out there. We got some soft streets. We got some thin areas. We brought them up. We did talk about it. We knew we were gonna have some patching going into this. And we dealt with them as we got to them.
So rather than looking at it as a hundred percent for some and zero percent for the other, that's just how I come up with the number. And basically you'd be getting paid for about seventy percent of the patches or of that quarter eighty-nine thousand. And say we're injecting about thirty percent of that cost using the front numbers. So I don't know if you're in a position to say that sounds fair or doesn't, or if you wanna think about it still or not, but.
What, what I would say is, um, of the patching that was done, the twenty-one hundred ton. If you wanna say, well, uh, you know, certain percentage of that broke up because it was longer, you know? Certain percentage of it was probably there right away. But what percentage of it do you think broke up because it was longer? Did this thing grow from here to here over that time period? So did it grow by, did the patch grow by ten percent? Did the patch grow by twenty-five percent? Or was, was the entire patch n- never there?
I don't think you wanna do that though, because if you take a ten by ten patch, that's a hundred square feet and turns into a twenty by twenty patch, that's four times as big.
That, that's what I'm saying. So, you know, from, from a patch area where you got a bad spot, if it sits longer, how much does it grow?
You don't know.
No, no, but what but well, what's fair, what what do we feel is fair? I mean. Did it grow by twenty five percent? Because if it grew by twenty five percent, then twenty five percent of that twenty one hundred ton. You would come to us and say, you know, it grew by twenty five percent, so you're responsible for the patching on twenty five percent of this twenty one hundred ton.
And then that comes up to about eleven thousand dollars.
Well, whatever, uh, what's twenty, what's twenty?
If you're going about twenty.
Twenty one hundred times twenty two five is what Jerry?
Twenty five.
And then times the twenty eight twenty. That's fourteen thousand.
Fourteen thousand eight.
Eight hundred five dollars, but.
And that's. You would pay zero for those instead of just the overage.
I guess that goes back to the question we were talking about before. Do you feel that you should pay nothing for some of those patches? Pay zero for. For getting the added benefit of getting new mix put in those holes and and filled up, do you feel like? That you should pay nothing for those?
If I look at it from that way, from that scenario, I would say zero, but looking at it the other way.
Well, it it's up to these guys.
So your recommendation is.
Out.
To pay seventy percent of the.
Of the one eighty.
One eighty nine.
Yep.
Which is about fifty nine thousand. That's above fifty nine thousand or deduct.
Yeah, rather than a hundred eighty nine dollar, a hundred eighty nine, we look, whatever that number is, pay for seventy percent of it.
So you took twenty. Hundred thirty two thousand eight ninety two.
So if you took twenty one hundred ton times the twenty eight twenty price for patching, overage for patching, that's fifty nine thousand two hundred and twenty dollars. So basically. What you would be saying to me is, we'll pay for that mix and that material, but we're not gonna pay for any of the cost for patching on any of it. That that's more or less what you'd be saying. Cause there's fifty nine thousand two hundred and twenty dollars there that you'd be deducting. Which is basically the overage for patching on twenty one hundred ton.
Well, board, we've got kind of a. Fairly solid. Figure from more. I have here ten, twenty, thirty, forty up to ninety percent. Of the cost of one eighty nine. We could sit here literally for a day. To talk about this.
We we would like for it to be done, Jerry, as would you. And so we would just like to be treated fairly, so we can be done with it and move on to some better things. I I I do feel that not getting paid any patching is is.
Understand.
Probably not the fairest, I I really don't feel that's the fairest. But but we would like to resolve it and be done with it.
So then I guess out of that.
Right.
So then I guess like out of that, I guess like twenty eight dollars a ton. So what's your labor? Labor, I guess. Labor, I guess. Is it half?
Uh, typically, our our labor and our equipment on on traditional paving would run about half and half. But on patching, it's probably more like two thirds and a third, it's much more labor intensive, less equipment intensive. If I answered your question.
So I guess your. Your expenses though, on that like twenty eight dollar a ton, you know, I mean.
Yep.
You're paying seventy six dollars a ton for the homework, it's just the the overage to do patch, it's an extra twenty eight dollars a ton to do patch.
And and that's probably primarily labor as opposed to material, you're gonna pay for material with forty eight dollars a ton, it's a fair.
So then I guess, um, you know, I guess, that's not your, that's not your exact, I guess.
Yeah, I would.
You know, I guess, like cost, you know, I mean, I mean, would that be some? Some, I guess, like profit, you know, on that, right? So I mean.
Yeah, typically, you might have some profit on there. Yeah, if there's no profit on there, you're not gonna be in business or. Correct. Yeah. Yeah.
You know, I guess I would just. I just like to pay you guys in material, in labor, you know, I mean. You know, because you did add value, you know, I mean, you know. There's no doubt, you know, you know, yes, there was some some. I guess increased damage by then.
I think to answer your question, you know, when there's extra work or added stuff, the 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 spec book doesn't come right out and say. This is what you get, but it but it, when it comes to force account, we can't come to terms on what's on the cost and you do it by force account. Typically, what the spec book allows is ten percent for profit. So that that would be, that would be around number. I wish I had bid this job with ten percent profit, but then we wouldn't be sitting here and you'd hired somebody else because we'd have been the odd guy. But tha- that's what on extra work and change order stuff, that's what we're entitled to, is ten percent profit. So on the twenty eight twenty, that would be basically two dollars and eighty cents a ton that could be attributed to profit.
We've been jobs right now where we're down at like five percent profit.
Zero.
Zero profit, I mean, it's it's that type right now, I mean, the market is. Not to, if you come in and we did every job ten percent profit, we never get any jobs. If somebody else comes in and they're bidding for twenty percent under us, how they're making it, I have no idea.
So I'm in agreement with Casey, I I recognize the fact that that we got benefit because that that material is in there. It's it's going to make those particular streets last longer than they would have had we had we not gone down that route. What I would like to propose, and I'll propose this in the form of a motion, is that we would, we would kind of split the differences there. To 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 capture, and and it's not, it's not precise science by any means. But to to recognize the the value. I would be making a motion that that we would be looking at a deduct of thirty seven thousand nine hundred and sixty nine dollars and twenty one cents. Which is about a twenty percent deduct off of the hundred eighty nine eight forty six. So in effect, the 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 payment then would be at a hundred fifty one thousand eight hundred and seventy six dollars and eighty two cents.
Okay. Thank you, Dan, the motion by pillar. Second by Stern. Discussion. Real call.
Keller.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Paul.
Aye.
Paul, an hour.
Aye.
I guess that leaves it up to you guys then.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Paul's gonna part, just take care of the paperwork, want us to revise that last estimate or is it already been processed? It's already been processed, so it's gonna get a nice one then, so we'll make sure that you get paid for that.
Okay, we have uh three other unresolved issues going on. One was for the added concrete work at West River for the sidewalk and the curb that they've asked of all after getting that done. And we can't get any response from our concrete guy, in fact, he's calling me trying to get us, trying to help us find some help to come in here and get some of what he's got. And he he has, he has no way to take on any in there anymore, and that's where he's at with that.
And that was added late, that was at that West River stuff.
Right, right.
A week ago or.
Which we had our, our, cause we're doing all the reveals and everything and our equipment is gone.
Right, so that's that's something that, you know, if we could do it, I'd find a way, if that changes in the future, we'll let you know, but right now, it doesn't look very good. We have given a price on what the concrete squares around manholes and gate valves, there was discussion about having that done. On some of them in certain areas.
I think that was limited pretty much to the areas where there was a somewhat of a significant mismatch between the final location of the asphalt and where the rigs were at.
Three of them, all undimined, there was two of them that's down below, they're about two inches below.
Right, so I guess we need to know if you wanna go in there with that, so we can get that put together and have that done. Or not. Um, and then there's an issue that just came up with the drainage at second and fifth. Where there was an asphalt, I guess Ted can explain it better than I can, but.
The existing drainage, I believe, there wasn't a valley gutter there, probably shouldn't have been, and there wasn't one added into the plans, you know, we went through, we paved it. Didn't show one on the plans and now it holds water back instead of draining across the road and stops there because there wasn't a valley gutter. In the plans to be placed in there. And so they came up, you know, wondering us if we can come in and put one in.
Second and fifth.
Exactly, because that that really narrow street.
What's what's the issue there?
For the spot by that. Well, there wasn't like an asphalt drainage way across, there was one valley gutter and then that got cement treated on the street.
Yep.
And so then it got a normal street section through there, so we got a crown built back into it, there were no grades put down, nobody recognized it. And so now it's got a crown in the street, so now the water can't drain across. So the 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 problem, you know, you can put a valley gutter in there. A valley gutter can go in alongside the other concrete one or an asphalt one or whatever you want to do. The problem is, the street like this, when you look down the street, has a crown in it. And you put the valley gutter in like this, now how do you get the crown of that street to match into that valley gutter? You gotta go back ten, fifteen, twenty feet on either side of that, tear out that pavement and now pave it back in. And you know where our asphalt plant is, it's not sitting in your yard anymore.
So so the scope of the work changed on that line, right? That that street was scheduled for less extensive work and it changed to a cement stabilized space.
Yeah.
So it was completely reconstructed, so it wasn't supposed to be significant changes there. So what I'm hearing you say is, your sub, they put the sub grade, they put the base back in, changed the profile. And we didn't catch it.
It 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 was never flagged or identified on the plans. The cement treatment was an add-on deal, was a part of the original.
I'm not, yeah, I just wanted to figure out what happened, so it changed, scope of work changed. It changed the way it did lay out. Valley gutter, at least you could put it in there, I would recommend that we put in the concrete valley gutters, that would be the the best long curve.
Yeah, but somehow we gotta patch that map, Jerry.
Yeah, I agree.
Is the water backing up to the west then?
It it's just the northwest corner, there's a certain portion of fifth that goes back and it goes to the drain rate by your house there. So that comes down, you get stuff coming down the street and collects it that that's northwest corner. The southwest side is actually, there's a portion that comes down the western, that actually curves around the corner and heads south. Now the uh, you know, the east side, the intersection southeast, it kind of breaks right there. So it's just that one northwest corner over there, so.
So. Profile changed. I'm sorry, but I still think your subcontractor did change the profile, can't be blue topped it that way, maybe no question, but.
But that was, that was an original forage milling. Coming across there, so all the asphalt was coming off there regardless, and there was no valley gutter planned to go back in.
Okay.
So don't worry.
I don't know whether there was a whole lot of water.
It was in there.
Anyway, it's not, it only holds water back.
It's only a little bit, but it's enough.
So I think we need to add a concrete valley gutter, we'd add that to plan, there there are big things for patching, we don't have to prove here anymore, but I guess. In light of all this discussion being as fair as possible, would you honor your patching price to patch one of the end of it?
I have to figure out how we're even gonna get it done, who's gonna do it and what the cost is gonna be, I'd have to get some prices from somebody else.
Okay, well, just please keep in mind that. We'd probably have to hire a worker. Really?
Yeah.
Well, I think we still gotta get it done, we could do a con- we could do concrete around the valley gutter as well. It just ends up being a really larger valley gutter and that gets, that may be cheaper.
So you're saying where he's talking about where you, there would be the need for patching to change the contour of the the asphalt to the valley gutter. You would in lieu of that, you would just expand your concrete out to. To that point, you're you're talking, you're talking ten feet.
Instead of building like a six foot wide valley gutter, you'd probably have a twelve or fourteen foot wide.
You'd have a big Los Angeles uh drainage ditch.
You'd probably have to tear out half that intersection to make that work after it's been paved. Half the intersection. Well, you're gonna have to go.
I I haven't seen it, so.
Into the street and then.
Unless they get.
I'd like to take a hand and see what it is. Well, I just wanted to bring it to your attention that we need to get this looked at and decided so we can line something up to get it on because it's gonna be difficult.
Is it something that can wait until? Spring? Or next summer? Or is it too much?
Issue that will come of that is the water's gonna back up in that corner and it's gonna go over to the AD ramp right there, that's gonna sit in three, so there isn't people. Slipping and falling and kind of somebody getting injured.
I don't know if you guys have done any work with quality. Construction out of Bismarck, they did tractor supply parking lot here in town. They bought mix from us and paved that, they've done a few things, bought mix from us and and I think they're pretty reputable. And that's probably the avenue I would go with, see if I get down to come in, they they don't have Davis Bacon labor, they got cheap labor. You know, something like that, they could put in much cheaper than we could.
Qual- I think it's quality asphalt?
Yeah, so, I mean, you have to figure out the scope of what you want us to do and then we'll go get pricing and get it back to you. I just wanna bring it up that, hey, we gotta get this done, yeah, this this late summer fall somehow. Because otherwise, you're gonna have a problem there this winter and the spring, the water's sitting there.
We agree, we agree, we saw, we gotta look at it, draw it up and.
It'll see a lot because that that street is only.
It's narrow.
Four or five wide, it's not, I'm saying you gotta come halfway into that street, there's a, I think there's a, there's a map or there's a, that street, there's not as much crown in there, it's big, though, it's only twenty foot. Or whatever you need.
We drive across now, it's goofy right now, it's a bit long in there.
Okay.
I'm supposed to be going.
It's fifteen through there.
So so is the 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 misalignment with the covers up there on Divide Street, those couple that were marked that were are significantly below the asphalt, is that a result of? The uh, the base work that we put in there or?
It's a result of the the old street being lower and then we brought up our new crown.
By actually making a crown on there the way that it should have been.
It was higher.
Okay.
In general. Well, not general, but in other instances like that, when you come across and you could build a road, you probably take those manholes off or the manhole covers off. Build your street and then come back in and match your manholes to your street, instead of matching the street to the manholes.
And if you try to match all the manholes with your norm, then your your eye's gonna be like this.
And that's kind of what we ended up with.
So.
So so the solution here is you you take the manhole out of there and you're gonna, you're gonna cut it out, form it up, bring the concrete up to the asphalt level and put the. Put the the framing in there for that for that manhole cover and put it back in.
Either that or do an adjusting ring, insert and put asphalt over top of it.
Those are the two options available. You can either fill it in with asphalt, whatever we do, we're adjusting the top of the casting. Uh, there's a couple different ways you can go at that. And then, yeah, we're only talking three of them, then you can either fill it in with concrete or you can fill it in with asphalt.
Zoom in our own.
We look at concrete simply because we figure it's gonna be easier at this point, we'll figure it out.
And it might be, you know. The one thing that I get literally on putting asphalt on top of concrete is you get a crack in that asphalt and the water gets in there. And matter of time, asphalt pops off the concrete. Yes, freezes in there.
Concrete is the answer on that. And it's gonna be more available.
And we just build a brand new thing there, so let's try to make it.
Yeah, there there were a couple of those concrete squares that we took out, I mean, they were, they were shattered, they were plus them.
Yeah.
All over the place and, you know, some of those, you'll see, there there's nothing there now because that that's what happened, which was on. And those actually blended pretty well the way they are, not just whether or not you wanna still put. Take out the asphalt and tie the aisle, there's like one or two of them.
That's that's the one moment, that was the one on Deapolis Divide that we had received emails on showing undermining stuff. They took that concrete out prior to.
Right.
And then we.
Yeah, that was a bad.
No, no one got to be put back in, so basically it was just.
And there's there's really no concern on leaving it like that, is there? I'm I'm bringing that, it's all asphalt right up to the man's cover, framing and stuff.
Yeah, I'm just saying, you can go up there, you can drive that one, now it's high in, very nice.
It does.
No question.
I think it's just the circumstance of that particular bathroom.
Yeah.
Is one, the reason I say to put the concrete back in. Yeah.
We'll figure it out.
Yes.
And you'll see other gate valves that. And you'll see, oh, there are eight valves that you drive on top, same thing, you know, the ones that are in the concrete. They're where they were, you know, we didn't change those, we just, so there are other spots where you gotta, a bump when you drive across them because they weren't, they were too low to start.
The good news is that they're not gonna catch the flaws. Or what that were.
We'll, we'll look at some of those because we may have to adjust, if they're that low, we probably should adjust them off some. But I don't think this is that big a deal.
Yeah, I mean, I didn't see too many that were significantly below.
Those, those are two of them.
Yeah. Any else? Sure. Me and you. Thank you all.
Thank you all, yes.